Let's go, Eddie. They got more than we had.
I tell you, I'm gonna woke up with something. I don't know what I got.
I'll try to eat.
I think the way I'm getting over there. I'll go home first. I'll go home first.
I'm on time for.
Boys.
I'm on time and I'm like, what's that going on?
This is why I'm always right. This is why I'm always right.
God, man. I was busy.
I'm like.
Oh, no, no, no. I just wanted to make sure you got.
When you come off. Yeah, I figured so. I was just, we got out early.
Honey, we're going down. Where's everyone sitting? And I still like got the fluid in my hand. It's so easy. Oh, it's in my hand so bad. When I went across the mountain the other day, I, oh, I thought I was hurt. He's just going in here.
You want to go over them?
Pour water?
Miller?
I'll start coughing if I don't. No, I'm good with him. I appreciate everybody helping. Before we get started. Been a pretty hard week of the month for everybody. I want y'all to know that. I've had a lot of thoughts on you guys this month. Been a bad month for, for our family, because we're all family. So that's for Eddie and Christie both. And I want you both to know that we love you guys. You're part of our family. We love you too.
Oh.
This is mine.
I am so sorry.
You were.
I'm so sorry.
So it's been a rough month on everybody here. I just want y'all to know that. But before we get started. My voice is really bad tonight and I'll do the best I can. If I start getting where I can't talk, I'll let Christie take over. Woody, you care stores more or parent please?
Well, we thank you for the love and your verses, Charlie, you get it.
We thank you, Lord. It's a good question. As Eddie's done spoke, we've got those that's with us that need comfort, Lord, for the loss that they've had in their family. And we ask that you let your comfort be with them. We ask that you give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding in all we do in the city business and our own personal lives. Ask that you guide our footsteps, Lord. We ask for your, your help in all things. We appreciate you for all the charge to us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
But we love you both.
Eddie, I didn't know that.
Was it that?
I'm sorry, Woody.
Yeah, I am.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. Been wild, yeah.
We'll go ahead and get to meeting, talk to order. The City of Everett, City Council Meeting, Monday through Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, is going to be called to order. We don't have a whole lot on the meeting tonight, but we'll start out with the financial report.
You have in your package, your, your monthly report. Uh, your checking balances, the general fund ended with seventy-nine thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. Coast average, four thousand, five hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. Fire fund, eight thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. The drug fund, two hundred nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Street fund, fourteen thousand, seven hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Recreation, one thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. Cannon garbage fund had thirteen thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Cops for kids had seven hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. Tourism, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. Sanitation, two thousand, seven hundred forty dollars and ninety-five cents. Sewer operations, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Sure depreciation reserve, fifty dollars. Water operations, twelve thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. The American Relief Act, uh, fund, seventy thousand, one hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. USDA bond account, fourteen thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars and eighteen cents. Water deposit, uh, ninety-five thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-six cents. KIA water fund, a hundred dollars. And the credit card account, three thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. General fund for the month brought in thirty-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. It expanded thirty-one thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars and forty-three cents. It brought in four thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-five cents more than it expanded. For the year, it has expended five thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars and one cent more than it has brought in. I'll give you a few moments just to look over the, uh, transactions that follow. Sanitation from fifty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. It brought in one thousand, one hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-three cents more than it, uh, brought, than it expended. For the month, it has brought in one thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars and thirty-five cents more than it expended for the year. The two, the two transactions follow that. The sewer fund. Brought in thirteen thousand, six hundred forty-one dollars and eighty cents for the month. One, or eleven thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents for the year. Uh, it brought in two thousand, two hundred eight dollars and thirty-six cents more for the, uh, month than it expended. For the year, it has expended one thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-six cents more than it has brought in. And the water fund. Brought in seventy-three thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-nine cents for the month. Expended seventy-three thousand, nine hundred thirty-three dollars and six cents for the month. It expended seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents more than it brought in. For the year, it's expended twenty-two thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-one cents more than it has brought in. And the ventures follow that.
We're just crazy monkey quick move into our hotel, okay?
Baxter, I was gonna ask about the sun thing. How we doing with them? Because all I see is negativity. Are they doing us okay?
We're using about three or four right now, just trying to see who's.
Yeah.
The better ones up in town.
I call them because I just get.
No, I've heard of it. I've heard, all I've heard has been negative. That's the reason I brought it up. I heard.
Got big monkey on top of it, Ernie. Got a big monkey on top of it. Then I were, um.
Right before Derrick went.
Yeah.
Right where, right where he's.
Got a law.
Yeah. Yeah, they, um, we used to have it down here.
Yeah. Okay. We've been trying to use our three or four garages and order. Work fires, we're just trying to figure out who's doing the best for us.
Yeah. That's the only reason I brought that. I've heard.
We use them, we use regional.
Yeah, I mean, they may be great, but I'm not making that bad lie out.
Yeah, we, we, we've just been trying to go through and see who's doing the best.
I never, I just never heard of it.
We just changed the name.
Okay. It's, uh, Jeremy, it used to be down here at Fox's years ago.
Yeah.
He did a lot of work for us down there. Just took it work.
Yeah.
They, so far, they've been good.
Ain't even the same ones that I'm, uh, in volume.
Yeah. Anybody got any questions about any of the checks, right, buddy? No questions? Can I get a motion to accept the financial report? Glad you made the motion. Exactly second. Everybody good with finances? Preston, you good with finances? You good with finances? Everybody, did you do with finances? Okay. Everybody's good. We'll move on to the minutes for last meeting.
City Mayor, six counts meeting, Tuesday, January twentieth, minutes, President Mayor, Eddie Manning, Jason Fowler, Ernie Ware, Jack Repro. First in line, Sir Ray Down, and Larry Call. Meeting is called, or the financial report is red line, makes a motion to accept report, next second, all present agree, minutes, for the January thirtieth meeting, all red line, makes a motion to accept minutes, next second, all present agree. One report is given, Renee makes a motion to accept the report, second, all present agree. Police report is given, that's the action, Jones, about the detail cops for kids report, and if one's ready, we'll get her, uh, report. Renee makes a motion to accept the report. Jason seconds, and all present agree. Fire report is given, Ernie makes a motion to accept the report. Renee seconds, and all present agree. Ken Taylor is present to speak to the City Council regarding the sewer project. The project will cost an estimated six hundred eighty-eight thousand. The grant is for five hundred thousand, so the city will need to apply for a hundred eighty-eight thousand through the KIA to finish the project. Ken tells the council they need to resolve it. The resolution should apply to become the KIA loan. The city clerk agrees the resolution. Jason makes a motion to accept the reading of the resolution. Preston seconds, and all present agree. Citizens are present to ask questions regarding the recent water allergies. Mayor Manning informs City Council that an application has been sent in. For earmark. Phone to Hale Rogers office. Jason makes a motion to observe, next second, and all present agree. Make motion, check minutes.
Everybody make a second. Everybody good with the minutes? No questions, anybody? Everybody good? We'll sign this right when y'all sign real quick. Uh, we're gonna go on from there. We're gonna move on to Woody for the water report.
All right, as you can see, within the water report, uh, those numbers was up a little bit from what we had anticipated, but we have found several times. Uh, tank overflowing, and it's just hard to get everything adjusted right, so we, a lot of that water is contributed to, or a lot of that usage rather is contributed to the tank overflow. But we did talk to, uh, CI Thornburg through email, uh, what Ken did, and he sent me forwarded information. We are on schedule for, uh, for them to be finished by the projected date after they got the first extension. So as far as I know, that's still on schedule, and that'll, that'll really help us be able to determine better where the issues are in the system, and it'll prevent anything like that from happening, any storage tank overflow, because we'll have accurate, up-to-date, uh, readings of where everything's at. Uh, so, so that is a big contributing factor as to why that number's so much higher than what we thought it would be. So that number will be significantly lower. We've just had to lower tank levels several different times to keep that from overflowing, which is a good problem. Uh, it's just getting used to, getting used to not having as much flow coming in and, uh, finding where everything's at. And it's, it's just really hard to run a whole system off of one tank knowing where it's at. So, so it's been a lot of back and forth, and where it's up on the mountain, and kind of the outside, out of mind, it's, it's hard to catch every time it does it, so. But everything is doing good as far as the mines doing well. We're still just running about fifty percent capacity on one of the wells, not using any other wells, so we've got plenty of extra storage, uh, uh, excess water if we need it. So, uh, mine is doing very well right now, and actually talked to Kentucky Division of Water, it came in yesterday. They're doing some studies, uh, to try to help us see what is causing the well levels to fall, other than drought, if it, if it is something that we can kindly plan for or anything like that. So they're coming in doing some studies and getting some numbers to see if there's anything that they can do to help us out. So, uh, just, just have, have a game plan for when things do get dry, which wells will be the best to use or, or whatever. So I'm getting a bunch of information to them, and they're gonna get back with me after they see everything that, that we've got, all the data that we've collected throughout the years. For the mine and the wells specifically.
See, the guys normally, you know, we'll run all four wells, the mines and the river pumps, and we've been late in years. So to know that we're running off just the mines and half of a wheel is pretty nice, but we also know that it won't last like this forever. As, as far as telemetry's go, we was talking about the telemetry's. Uh, Ken's been over pretty good about this, and they seem to be giving us, uh, waiting updates. That's moving a lot of good too. So, you know, like to put the telemetry's put in, that'd be great. That'd help us tremendously.
Absolutely.
Anybody got any questions for Woody?
I'm right in the room.
All right, everybody make the motion. A large second. Is everybody? Everybody good?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Woody. Next, we're gonna move on to the police report.
For the month of February, we had a total of nine reports, cash reports, three of those being drug related, five theft, zero assault, and one arson. We had zero traffic collisions, eleven motor assist, and forty-one total calls to complaints. Three agency assists, eighteen traffic stops, twenty-two arrests, and two hundred and seventy-five man hours. Everyone got a copy of the? We also made another traffic arrest on Joey Blevins. This, this is one of the other main ones we've been wanting to get. Uh, he's been selling heroin. It's not typically heroin, it's just pure fentanyl. Just wanted to make everyone aware of that. Uh, if you see any bags or anything laying around, be very cautious. It's no longer heroin, it's just pure fentanyl. And it's, uh, we've already had a, an overdose or two in the area that's obviously not ended well, so. Just keep an eye out for that. If you hear, especially with the heroin guys, if you hear of anyone, uh, possibly selling that, let us know. We're trying to get to these people and also put the word out there to, you know, some of our users, you know, it's, you know, to stay away from the heroin right now. It's, it's very, very dangerous. Because we went and had it tested, and it was tested for three different types of fentanyl. It's not just your, uh, warfing, warfing, and all that, and it's deadly, very deadly. And, uh, also with him, we got a potential for further charges coming along. Uh, he did acknowledge, you know, that some of that fentanyl that he had had hot spots in it, so. We're gonna see if we can do this as far as, uh, extra. There'll be certain spots in the fentanyl that, uh, well, in the way he made it, there'll be certain spots, it's not as potent, and then you could get a spot that is extra potent.
Extra potent?
Yeah, it's, uh, very, 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 very dangerous.
Okay.
It, it's also with fentanyl, obviously, it's not even something you wanna come into skin contact with. You don't have to consume it. You can absorb it through your skin, and there's been a lot of officers actually.
What kind of quantity?
No, it, it's what we bought from this person.
Okay.
We actually made a purchase from him, and that's one of the, well, two of the.
It's sad. You wish they were selling actual heroin. You know, it's like, it's sad.
Well, but that, that is what they're selling it as. They're calling it heroin, but.
Yes.
I'm here to tell you first, because he's, he was there as well. It's pure, pure fentanyl. Very dangerous, very, very dangerous.
I said, oh, that's good, makes so. Me too. Since I quit, and I've heard about all that, I'm like, ooh.
So it should be more than that.
It doesn't take very much fentanyl at all. It could harass me anything else. Very, very small amount of fentanyl. There could be potential for a lot of overdoses in that area. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I get excited here, stop.
There's a, a- anytime you hear heroin now, it's.
Just.
And there's more and more people are starting to sell it. Fentanyl from across the border is super cheap to make, super cheap. You can send it over here and make ten times your money. It's profitable in the drug game, but extremely dangerous.
Deadly in the game.
Yeah.
Deadly in the light game.
Yeah. But yeah, you, if you hear of anyone, even if it's just a, even if you don't much believe the person that's telling you, if someone might be selling it, let us know. That's something we definitely leave it off the street though.
Anybody, anybody got any other questions for Danny or anything? Wow, I'm Mike Wood.
Good job, man.
Larry's second. Everybody good with the police report?
I ain't seen you.
Oh, he was, he was just a little added to it. It, it, it shocked me that he was moving a lot. We, we bought ten plus grand off of him. He, he, he actually, he was moving a, a lot. He was probably one of the bigger dealers in that area, just off the pad. Which shocked me, you know, I had no idea. I had no idea.
I'm pretty sure he grew up in Verna.
He did.
He grew up in Verna.
With David.
Do you know David?
Yeah.
Okay, that is funny. Those two ran together.
Yeah. Yeah.
Those two ran together.
Nobody's got nothing else for Denny, woman, wrong, as I always like to say it, my main man, Cleo.
Yeah, I ain't got a whole lot going on. I had two fires. One outside the city and one inside the city. And one lives sits inside the city. That's pretty much it, right there. Appreciate police department coming out, and when we have something going on, they, they show up and help us if we need anything. Thank you.
Thank you. You helped us do some traffic control down there. I forgot my office. Thank you.
Okay, anybody got any questions for Cleo?
I'm Mike Wood.
Maintenance questions, right now? Already made the motion, Jackie seconds. Everybody good with fire report?
Good.
Okay. Uh, next we're gonna move on to old business. Yeah, Christie's got something on business. I was, who, who, who's person she can explain it to?
You've got a copy of the, um, this is the ad we put in the paper for the request for the engineers. And if you look, we had to do it for the water treatment plant and the tower, the water tower. And I've got it highlighted, um, they have to bring seven copies of those qualifications to the office by four P M. on March twenty-sixth. Then what we'll have to do is, we've got to have a special call meeting on March the twenty-seventh at five. Now, we can have all of you or some of you, it don't matter, but I just need to know who, um, will be available for the meeting, because what we need to do is when those copies come in, um, me or Denny or someone will bring them out to you all so that you can have them at home to look over for a couple of days before, because these are not sealed bids. You know how we do sealed bids? These are not sealed bids. So you'll have them to look over for a couple of days before we do the meeting. Um, but like I said, the meeting's on March the twenty-seventh at five.
Do we have to have four?
We have to, no, because it's tech, it's technically not a meeting. It's not, like, anyone can come, it's, it's, it's a public meeting, but I don't have to have four of you all here, because it's a committee who will be choosing, like, you know, me and Eddie and Woody, of course. Um, and then whatever. I mean, I don't have to be a vote member, but I do have to be present to take minutes. Um, Eddie don't have to be a vote member, he just can if we need him to be. But I need, we need to have a combination of at least seven people. So if we wanna do three and four, or if all of you all want to attend, we can do you six, and, you know, whomever, me, Woody, Eddie, whoever, to make number seven.
What it boils down to is we've gotta take these packets, and we have to grade them. And then when we get it, the seven people in this committee will grade them, and then after we do that, then we will award by grade the engineer for these projects to get the tank put in, the new water plant project.
Yes.
But, so there has to be seven of us to sit on board to do it. Don't necessarily even have to be council members or me.
No.
But we have to have seven. So, uh, it's always better if you've got council members. Uh, and I think Woody would need to sit in on it because.
He kinda knows.
He kinda knows the ins and outs of it. You know, of course, I'll, I'll sit.
Five.
I'll sit there because we have to grade these engineers.
That's next Wednesday, Jason. Five. So if you can't make it.
I'm calming down, I'll be.
It's fine, but you can, it's like.
Let me know, yeah. Send me a message. I'll be here. You know that.
Um.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but I have a question for a tenant of mine, and Woody's gone now.
It's really important for us to make sure that we get these graded and get that awarded, so that way they can start on that tank project. Because that tank project, from my understanding, the money's there just waiting for us to get the project started, but this has to be done first. And you don't necessarily have to award the.
Same project, the same person.
Like, say, if you come in and you say, okay, we want the tank project to go to this engineer, we want the water plant project to go to this engineer, you can split it up.
You can.
You've seen both engineers here, uh, talking to us about it. You don't have to necessarily go to.
It, it's kinda gonna be whoever the qualifications fit for the project.
So how long is it? How, I mean, is it gonna be an all-night type? I mean, what do you think it's gonna?
I mean, it could go five minutes, it could go an hour.
Oh, okay.
It's all it will be, Jason, is discussion of those packets.
Fine, man.
And Bobby.
I ain't trying to bitch, but I'm just trying.
No, no, no.
Trying to make sure I allot myself.
No, you're fine, but we can't.
It needs to, it needs to be a good meeting.
Yeah.
That's fine with me. I was just saying, an hour, an hour and a half, I'm good with that.
We need to be real thorough who we hire, because, you know, we went through this in nineteen ninety-one. You know, we got the wrong engineer for the project, and that's why we have a dam. To feed water to a water plant that's not suitable for river water. We need to make sure that we spend as much time as we have to.
And do it right.
Yeah.
I got you.
I would allot for a little while.
Yeah, because again, it, it's not a, uh, it's not a formal per se council meeting where we can take questions and, and discuss other things. It's just a, um, it's just a committee meeting for a business purpose only.
It's, no, I might have to be out of town, but if I'm in town, I would gladly.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be a seven-member co- committee.
Seven-member committee.
And this is all along, this is how they make it. But we need to get this done past the can.
I'll put you down.
It needs to be done, because we need to make sure we get the right engineer for the right project. And the quicker we move on, the quicker we, uh.
It's Tuesday.
You're right.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay, yeah. I can let you know Tuesday, okay. I was about to say, it's Tuesday, but no, Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, at five.
Yeah, I should be.
Now, do you think you can be here, you know, yet?
Yeah.
You think you can? And if you all wanna call me back, you know, by the end of the week, let me know something. Like, schedule changes, what, you think you'll be here or not? Then by all means, please just call me and let me know, because if, if something happens and you all say, hey, I'll be here, and you can't, I'll call somebody, don't matter. Like I said, I don't have to be a vote member, but I can be.
I should be fine. I'll know by noon Tuesday.
Okay. And, and I'll call you all on, you know, on Tuesday and remind you, like I always do. Preston, you think you can come on Wednesday at five?
Yeah. You know, twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, yeah. I'll call you and remind you.
Okay.
The quicker we get this done, the quicker we can get this project.
Your name's done, you're right.
You know, Bud, like I said before, we need to allot as much time as we can, because this is very important. We don't wanna rush through it. We wanna get the guy for the right thing.
I did have one guy, he, it's a tenant of mine, and he was here at the last meeting, he just sent that to me. It was something about, I'm, I was trying to see, and it was, I think it's, uh, I think it, here, see, I think he just saw where the tank was overflowing.
Oh, yeah, that's what it is.
Okay, so what, just tell him that we're.
We just, we put too much water to go out.
That's actually a good sign.
Yeah, but it's he or words, that one, that's what I was wondering. It's the one right down here. He mentioned it being back up in the mountain, he, I don't, oh, it's both of them.
Branch is the one too, that he was talking about. Is that, is that?
That's the one, we didn't talk about Laurel Branches, almost a daily thing. You know, that, some of you are just spending down at Laurel Branches, what, five years, six years?
You don't wanna waste water, but it's a good sign that you got water. But that's what the telemetry's do. See, the telemetry, what they do is they send signals to the water plant, and they kick on and off as they go, so you don't overflow them. So like, say if BMO's telemetry's, if they're pumping water from us, their telemetry's is set up to where it'll kick off when it gets to so high and kick on when it gets to so low. But when the telemetry's don't work, that's what happens. You either do one of the two. You either don't kick on when you need to. But when the telemetrys don't work, that's what happens, you either do one of the two, you either don't kick on when you need to, or it don't kick off. But right now, I'll take water overflowing out of tanks, other than not having water in the tanks.
Yep.
So, we don't wanna waste any of it, but we can't go through the summer like this.
No.
So, that's why it's been so urgent for us to get this telemetrys done. Uh, like I said, they, they've been real good about giving us updates, I think that's gonna happen in the next little bit, the parks are in, so... I'd say for the next couple of weeks, we may sit down here working on this.
They gotta get on program, so...
You know, that was a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar project, so, but that'll give us, and what that does, too, is the telemetry's has been down up at Laurel Branch for a long time. Now, they've worked at the plant tank, and Sal Branch, and Shields Tank, but that Laurel Branch is very important to us, because it feeds a lot.
Oh, it feeds everybody.
So, it's been there for a long time, so when we get that, see, if your telemetry's drops real fast at Laurel Branch, then Woody can say, okay, hang on, I think we got a leak, and I think it's in this area. Or if Sal, we can kinda gauge it better, so, uh, but, but I'd rather have too much water than no water. That's a good problem right now. So, all right, so we're through this, we'll get this done.
Yeah.
The only other thing I had in old business, a couple of things, uh, the summer project that we've been working on, uh, Ken's staying on top of it, so we're writing a schedule for it, we need to get that done. But, uh, you know, Ken is staying on top of it, so that's working out for good. Uh, we'll get him that, you know, engineering just takes time, but he is on top of it. Another thing that's probably gonna be in old business, because we've done it before, Jason and Renee may not have been here when we done it before, and other guys was, but about six years ago, we, uh, we leased out the RV parks to the park board. Uh, at that time, there was just a burden on the city, it was costing us a little bit financially, and we didn't have the manpower to run them. It was taking away a lot of things that we needed to be doing, so we decided, um, to, uh, as a group, we decided to lease them out to the park board, because we felt like the Harlan County, out of Rick Board, we could promote them more, and could clean them up and make them look better. So, that was six years ago. Uh, the lease we did yearly, the park board has approached me and said that they would like to start putting more money into the RV parks, but they want more of a long-term lease. Hey, I get it, you don't wanna spend that much money on these RV parks, then all it wants to see in the neighborhood say, no, you fixed them up, we want them back. I get it, so what I wanna propose to you all is to go ahead and let me sign a five-year lease with them on the parks. That will give them the assurance that we're not gonna pull them back, and give them the opportunity to say, hey, we can put some money in them. We do, we done the other ones here at a time, five years is fair, we don't charge any money for them, but what it basically does is, we don't have any, uh, we don't have a lot of liability on them.
We don't have to take them back.
We don't have to take them over. So, that's what I wanna talk to y'all about, are you guys all right with it?
Yeah, makes one matter, but...
Yeah, and, and they promote them better, their website promotes them, so...
No, those monies that was locked, that's when I was here, and I was working with Joey Williams, you never heard?
Yeah.
Okay, that's federal funds. If, if we're gonna sublease it, are we gonna have to get the permission back then, Frank, for to do that?
We did.
We did six years ago.
She, she would be that old paper.
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as it's to another nonprofit entity.
Right.
And because it's going through the county via the nonprofit, then yes, we can.
But if you remember right, the lease for the shower house was done under the park board, about under the city.
Yeah.
For the shower house.
For the north, the North Everett Shower House.
Oh, yeah.
Basically, it was theirs anyway.
That one's ours anyways, but the south park was done to us.
Right.
I got that from one of the A Q D.
Yeah.
So, basically, the way they did it back then, this was before my time, and probably before most of our times, the RV park down here was done under a, you know, a grant, but then over there at North Evarts, the, we couldn't, we couldn't have two shower houses, so they did that grant under the park board, that's been theirs the whole time, but the city's always running it. So, what, and I get it, you know, I, I, if I was in, and I was gonna paint it up, fix it up, and put new gravel down, I wouldn't wanna do it, and then the city say, hey...
You're right out from it.
So, what they're asking for is a five-year lease, we did all the legalities of it back in two thousand eighteen. So, and I think I was done all of those, too, so it was all good.
But we need some kind of assurance, so they will maintain it.
That actually is part of the lease, yeah.
Yeah, it's all...
The mayor, the mayor will appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm like, I wouldn't know unless it's all there.
It was, it was a bicycle ride, I think it was about five, six miles long, he just signed it over to a group that wanted to help clean any of that and all that. And they come back, they're like, take your money away from me, and they said, you gotta get our permission, of where you can do that, but when you're going from nonprofit to a nonprofit, it probably get no problem.
Yeah, we checked into it.
I wouldn't think so.
The, uh, part of the lease agreement that we had with them back then, was that part of it was the fact that they had to maintain them to our standards. So, if we ever felt like that they weren't being maintained, or they were starting to become an eyesore in the city, we could take them back. That's still part of the lease. Yeah, it'll be the same lease, it's just gonna give them five years, and that way they can spend a little money on them, these can be done. So, uh, if you guys are all right with that, just somebody will make an informed motion to the...
I'll make that motion.
The mayor, whoever it shall be, to, uh, to sign the five-year lease with them.
Yes, sir.
Jason, make the motion. Is everybody okay with that? That's above and off of us, and it gives them a little, I give them a little more assurance that we're not doing anything with it. Okay, uh, anybody got anything else on old business? All right, we'll move on to new business. Only thing I got in new business is, I wanna tell everybody that, uh, we'll be doing spring cleanup on April eighth through April fourteen.
What's our date?
April eighth through April fourteen. That will be, that will be spring cleanup through the county. So, of course, you know, anybody that lives in, on District Two, uh, Manchester Mower will have two dumpsters set up, and have one set up at Cox, and he'll have one set up at Three Bottle Water Plant, where we have been doing it, so that way you can...
April eighth for what?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
So, anybody that's got any trash or anything, can go ahead and, or take it to one of these dumpsters, and they'll empty them as soon as they get done, so, and they'll help us clean, they'll help us clean up the mess afterwards, so, and that's the county doing it, but that's a good plan, we can, if anybody's got any trash, that's for our district, too.
Are we gonna go and pick it up and take it there, or do we just want to tell them to take it there?
Well, last year, I think they, they bring it, look, you know, if people need help, we'll help. If somebody's able, physically able to take it over themselves, take it over yourself, if you live inside city limits and you need help, that's what we're here for, you call us and we'll come if you...
You're gonna be stationed there?
One in Coxton, and one at Three Bottle Water Plant.
When, when we was doing the trash thing, we had talked about maybe having those dumpsters over there at Genietown, did that arrive?
We, we have...
Then we still have dumpsters where people, if they have something, instead of trying to take it on the mountain, we can direct them to?
We have them, but we've got a lot.
We have a lot, it's because if, if not, you're gonna have everybody in the town.
I, I respect that, I was just saying, like, if anybody does ask, like...
Have them call.
Yeah, and we just thought...
That's what we've been doing.
Yeah.
Uh, something we, we can even go get for them, if they have a hard time getting down there.
Got you, I just, like I said, I remember we brought that up, and I never did it.
We're just not broadly advertising it.
I remember about, I remember about fourteen, fifteen years ago, that's one thing I said, that one of our most important jobs, when I sat on council, was to get the trash out, I still think that's true.
Yeah? I just wish there was some sort of government funding that would allow us to do some shit ourselves, I mean, I know it's too expensive.
That's all I had in new business, do you think they got anything else?
Well, I got one, over in that, by, what we call it, by the border, on Disney Street.
Okay.
They done tore down a trailer.
Yeah.
And it is awful.
That's gonna have to be done through a blighted, because the woman that owns it don't live in Everett no more, so y'all gonna have to have your blighted meeting, or go have a blighted meeting.
Cause, uh, you know, people reach up with mud rats, and all of that, it looks awful, you can go past Gore Del thirty-eight, and look, you can see it happening. Or, um...
Do we need a blighted meeting to do that? Well, we could have a blighted meeting, if y'all wanna have a blighted meeting at four forty-five next Wednesday, we could have a blighted meeting fifteen minutes before the, this stuff here, if y'all want to do that.
We'll have to, we'll have to put it over to someone.
Where's that at?
Leave it there for ninety days.
On Disney Street. If you go over right down...
Other trailers, we, you've been working on?
Oh, yeah.
You can go down Bell Street, and make your right, and turn on your left, you'll see all this garbage up there, and these people got grass, not taking care of the yard, over there in Florida, Disney, it looks awful.
Do you all wanna have a blighted meeting?
They need to have that guy that's down my way that's making that thing, he turned that trailer into that museum. They did, we need for people to shut it fifteen minutes early, because we gotta have it as a meeting. I'm in town, I'm talking about...
And I can't promise that, if I hear it, uh, cause I mean, I'm coming from Harlan.
But before, no, we can do it after the fact, it don't matter.
I, I can do it before or after.
It's just a blighted meeting where we sit down, she tells us, y'all tell us what we think's blighted, we send the police out, they deem it blighted, you know, go...
I'm in town.
Go through the legalities of it.
It's on both sides, you know, check rocks, rock trailer, and dotted fences, it just look awful, it's hilltop for the man.
But it's very no-hastings.
It's trailer, and they pull it down, and it looks awful.
What we just did, deemed it blighted, put a notice on it, and...
You know, Dean can get his pictures of it, bring it to the meeting.
Do check rocks, you know, like, Chris.
When he's tagged, he got ninety days to clean it.
I have to look at the text, Bill.
So, Dean, if you got any plans, Dean will do them. Before the blighted meeting.
Well, he got a lot of turds over, he never... And that house of Terry's, falling in up on the hill.
Is that one, do you wanna get pictures of that one?
Mm-hmm. That did for the, no, don't, and I don't know what happened to it.
Whenever he had the blighted, because I was, uh...
Yeah.
We had, we got all these old houses there, and the nigger even blighted order, that's why I'm...
Hey, what's going on, speaking of which, once we, the ones we have, by the way, what's going on?
I was, uh...
So, we never met again.
Is that the one you're selling?
That's...
I'm about to light it, Matt, but it goes, I'm saying, it's like, boy.
We got them in the corner now, so...
I don't care. I'm about to light it, Tim. I'm not, I...
One of them probably gonna do it for you.
That's all we're getting there, doing that fentanyl, you talking about.
So, we need to, we need to, we need to get back on, have a blighted meeting, this...
He renewed the order. We need to do it like Harley, that way we don't have to wait so long. I was gonna go tomorrow.
And then whenever it's cool, we have to buy them, get them along.
They get shit done.
Does anybody got anything else?
And I...
Make a note, we adjourned.
Oh, man! What you doing there?
Jason, did you second it?
I'm gonna second it. That's my job, that's the one fucking for you, I'm the adjourned guy. Shit! I'm going, though.
Get you, man.
You're a white man, go to jail. Here's the fentanyl.
Hey, uh, did you put that in a vanilla golf machine, it's up in, or worms and grapes, they call it, Danny.
Well, decent meeting, and yes, that drug is killing everyone in the county.
Where does that get posted?
YouTube.
YouTube, right, on what?
Harlan County, Kentucky Transparency.
Cool, cool, hey, I'm glad you like it doing it, I know a lot of them, right, but I would love it.
Well, I appreciate it. At the park across the street, there's so much going on, I thought we was gonna have a packed house, but nope. All right, guys, as he said, the overflow that was sent is a good thing. But just gotta figure out how not to lose it once it gets hot, so... For everybody that watched it live, I thank you. For those that's not subscribed, subscribe, it's free, make sure you give it a little thumbs up. Anybody have any questions? Nope, well, I'm gonna end this, y'all have a good one, stay safe, and I'm gone. I'll see you all on the next one. Make sure you subscribe, tickle that little bell, y'all stay safe.